Aye.
Aye. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you EB Cam for recording our meetings. First up we have Lilia.
Hi. So, big week coming up, homecoming week. The main goal of homecoming this week is to get back on track with the whole Viking Pride aspect. We're really hoping to bring the community together because that's the whole idea of homecoming. I think we've kind of lost that in the previous years, but we're hoping to get that back where it's supposed to be. So, it's an extremely important year. So, the Spirit Days, we have like New England sports on Mondays, Decades Day, Western, Pink Out, and Viking Pride. The theme of homecoming this year is Decades, so that's what the dance theme will be, like disco kind of thing. So, that'll be fun. The Homecoming Dinner is something that's been an event before, but we're bringing it back this year. So, it'll be Thursday, which is the night of the bonfire as well. So, that will be five to seven in the cafeteria and then the bonfire after at seven o'clock. The Homecoming Court was nominated and they'll be recognized at halftime during the game. The shopping carts, we're bringing back. It was an old tradition at EB, but we're bringing it back. So, each class will get a shopping cart and they'll be able to decorate it as their decade. During the whole homecoming week, we have a lot of fun events going on to include the whole community and the younger schools as well. So, we have the captains of sports teams going to Central on Thursday to get them kind of excited about the bonfire and the game. And then on Wednesday, the Homecoming Court and the class officers will read to the Central School their book of the month. I'm not sure what that is yet, but we'll read that to them about halfway through our day. And then the dance is Saturday, six thirty to eight thirty. And as I mentioned, it was disco theme. And for any of the parents watching, the ticket information is on Parent Square, so just look out for that and other information you might have about homecoming week in general. I'm super excited. Hopefully everyone enjoys. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next up, we have Superintendent's Court.
Sure. Good evening. A couple of things. We have a special town meeting on October second, twenty twenty-three. Central School feasibility study was a go. We're going to unanimous vote on that. And so, we'll be moving forward with the Central School Building Committee. I did meet with Mr. Selig about updating and changing the makeup of the building committee. I know that Rebecca Fiddler will be taking over your spot. We have contacted MSBA. We sent up the new names. It takes twenty days for them to go through. It's been a little bit less, but they have up to twenty days to validate the names and say, yes, you're okay to be on the building committee. We hope to have a meeting in the next two weeks to have the kickoff and to bring people in, and we'll let everybody know when that is. We also have, we received the turf reimbursement back from the town for KBA architects. And we booked, the Select Board and FinCom Capital Planning Meetings, I think that it was loud and clear that everybody wants to be part of the conversation, make sure that everybody knows what's going on, whether it's here at the schools or in the community. So, we'll make sure that everybody is made abreast, as you saw that email today. We'll start talking about budget pretty soon, as soon as we can. The building, the only thing I have on the building project update is the feasibility study is a go, and now we'll go out for an RFQ. And then after that, we did speak to the MSBA today in an email. Once Mr. Selig puts out for the RFQ and we retain an architectural firm, then we will go out and acquire an OPM, and I believe the MSBA will help us with that. I want to thank, a couple of weeks ago, I was in a meeting and John Shea actually came in and said that there was a woman in the main office here at the high school that was looking for, to make a donation to the District of East Bridgewater. So, I walked down and asked this woman to come up to my office. Her name was Patricia Riggs, a resident of East Bridgewater and educator in Hingham for over thirty-five years of her career. She was, she taught middle school science in Hingham. She has two daughters, and she said, I don't have grandchildren. And we started talking about education, and we started talking about kids. And she donated a check that evening for two hundred dollars. And I guess I invited her tonight to come to introduce herself and for us to thank her, and came in and handed Lauren Foster another two hundred dollars.
Which I then turned over to her. So, we're up there.
What we discussed is, she doesn't want to buy computers, and she doesn't want to give kids pencils, and she doesn't want to do the things that we already do. What she wants to do is help a student, male or female, that maybe doesn't have something that everybody else has. Maybe a pair of sneakers, maybe help out with somebody that's taking driver's ed and doesn't have the finances or needs to take driver's ed and needs some help, or maybe some scholarship towards something like that. Or maybe a prom gown, or maybe a prom ticket, or maybe something that somebody can't do or their family can't do, that maybe we can have something set aside like this for a student that Mrs. Riggs has thought that it would be to pay it forward. And she said, you know, she got the idea from a lot of people, and you know, she's heard about it at Dunkin' Donuts, and says, I'll pay for the coffee behind me, or you know, McDonald's. They never said Taco Bell. But she said at McDonald's, I'll pay for that guy's lunch behind me or breakfast over there. She wants to get back to her town. She wants to get back to kids. She was a teacher. I think it's admirable. I want to thank Mrs. Riggs on my end. I'm sure that you did as well, Lauren, but I wish she was here this evening. Very nice person, had a nice conversation. She knew Dr. Williams. Her girl's from Dr. Williams' sister and her dance school. So, I thought that was, she's a community member. She's values education, but she also understands what goes on in schools. And as a middle school science teacher, she certainly understands what goes on in schools. So, I want to thank Mrs. Riggs and thank her for her kind donation, and we will use it for students who need, not a want, but a need, so that we can support them moving forward. I also want to talk about, Brian Kylie and I had a meeting today. He just wanted to update us that the town is going out for a green community grant, and this will help do our upgrades in lighting at the high school and middle school, and we're applying now for this, which is important to know that we do try to keep up and do the right things for our buildings as we move forward. And we've been doing this. The high school lighting's all been changed, and that was part of the grant. And we finished that, I think, a year and a half ago, we finished all the lighting here at the high school, and now we'll move on. You didn't hear Central School because Central School could potentially renovate or reconstruct, whatever is the decision of the town. But we're going to, we're going to continue to look at the Mitchell School and continue to look at the high school for green community, for grants. We need to remember that the high school is ten years old now, and there's going to be things that need to be done here. So, we need to get that into a maintenance project. Maintenance sort of type of study that you've talked about before, Mr. Furia. We also talked about the Mitchell School. Mitchell School's going to need a new roof. Now, we already spent, you know, a million on Central School's roof, so we really need to think about that and figure out how we're going to do that in the next three to five years, especially when you have a building project. But we need to start talking about them and get a plan for the town and the schools and some type of maintenance program. So, that's really what I have to do this evening. Try to keep it short so they can move to the meeting.
Great. Thank you. Moving on. Moving on to reports and discussions. First up, we have the Strategic Plan, Social Emotional Wellness.
So, Mrs. Dupre from the Mitchell School, Mrs. Nichols from the Central School, and Mrs. Anderson from the junior senior high school, reporting out on our strategic plan, number one, which is social emotional wellness. Just to bring this up, reminder that the strategic plan drives our budget, where we put our, where we allocate funds. As you know, we put an adjustment counselor in every building. They're going to discuss this tonight and tell you how those, how those, how that personnel has helped us and supported us and is working for our kids. And maybe going forward, we need to look at this. And we know that SEL has taken over a big part of a lot of what we do. Just this afternoon, I was in a meeting and I heard anxiousness and anxiety several times with our younger grades, that it's not so much what they're learning or have to learn, it's the neediness of, I don't know, being anxious. And then they, we think that they're needy. It's not really that. It's they have a lot of anxiety and anxiousness. So, the needs have grown. What we do here is different, and we need to look at schools differently, and I think that we are. And I think that this group will certainly come full circle and talk about a lot of things that each of the buildings are doing and all the great things where we're strength, where we have our strengths, and I'm sure that we could do better in some areas of support.
Great. Thank you Superintendent Legault. We're excited to be here to present strategic plan goal number one. Now, we did change this to goal number one purposely as a district because we really feel and believe that in order for kids to learn successfully, they need to be well, emotionally, mentally, socially, in order to access the curriculum. So, I applaud Dr. Williams and Superintendent Legault for taking a look at this from a district perspective and looking at the overall well-being of our students. So, we've done a lot of things as a district to make sure our kids are okay when they come to school. So, one of the things is focus on building relationships. That has been a theme across the entire district at all three schools, is that even if a student has just one connection with an adult in a building, it doesn't matter who it is, they can feel more connected and they'll want to come to school. So, that's something that we're always striving to do, is to build those relationships. We also are continuing on with our UDL Academy, which I know the first meeting is tomorrow. There are representatives from all three buildings that talk about inclusivity and how do we improve that in our classrooms and in our schools. We also this year, which is new, we're looking to add a DEI group, so diversity, equity, and inclusion, under the advice of Dr. Kalise Warner, who we consulted, who was amazing and dynamic. She's going to talk about how we can help everybody feel included. And then we've already done our safety care trainings, our initial training for new staff. We have trained fifteen additional people in safety care, which really talks a lot about de-escalation and how do we work with students that have challenging behaviors and get them to the place where they're safe. So, tonight, we want to talk about and highlight some of the things that we're doing in each of our buildings, and you'll see a lot of overarching themes because we're doing a lot of the same things that are consistent across the district as the students develop and go through our schools. So, we'll start with Ms. Anderson at the junior senior.
Hi. Today is actually World Mental Health Day, which is very cool that we are doing this on today. So, due to that, our Active Minds is a new chapter for us. It's about suicide prevention, and today they went actually into the CAFR World Mental Health Day and was able to give resources. Kids wrote really nice cards, and we actually saw a lot of kids start to talk about their mental health together. So, that was really exciting for us. So, that was a big thing. We have student support team meetings every Tuesday. It's for kids that are really high at risk that need extra support. We bring in the nurse. We bring in Officer Connor. We bring a teacher if we feel like we need to, so we have those supports. We also have the child study teams and RTI, which we work very closely with. We do 504 reviews in the beginning in September and October with families that need to be reviewed, so we sit down with them. We go over the 504 and what accommodations need to change as they keep getting older, so it prepares them for college. We have a social work intern that has started, Mr. P. He's awesome. The kids have already adapted to him. We work with EB Hope Collaboration. We meet with Gabby every month. We have joined I Decide at Mass General, which is a vaping curriculum. Some of my staff is being trained tomorrow in Worcester to be able to start to work with kids with that. We have started a freshman welcome dinner because we feel like the shift from eighth grade into ninth, because we're in the same building. We wanted to target those ninth graders that they feel like they're part of the high school, ninth through twelfth, not just seventh and eighth. So, that's next week. And then we have social groups starting in mid-October. So, we have a grief group that's going to start for anyone that has lost someone in their life, Lunch Bunch. I know it sounds silly, but our kids love it. And some peer building groups where some kids are having a hard time finding new friends, so we are starting some different ways to get them to meet newer people. So, that's kind of the newer stuff that we're doing at the high school.
That's great. You'll hear a lot of the same things at the Mitchell School, they do overlap. We started the school year with some welcome back assemblies, and the theme was, all are welcome here. And so, it was on the theme of inclusivity. And again, we're trying to make sure everyone feels connected. We took a look, and we're still looking at, the survey that was done at the end of the year through Panorama, and we're always trying to improve. So, we looked at the engagement piece, and for us, we'd like to see that higher. So, as Superintendent Legault said, that there are things that we want to work on and strive to get better at. We want kids to feel connected in school. We want them to see the purpose for coming to school and want to be there. And so, we're going to still strive to do that, and there are ways and strategies that we're implementing this survey into real world life. And I'll say somewhere about that as we go on. We have student support teams, just like Mrs. Anderson had mentioned. Every Friday, we meet with a group of people and we talk about students at risk, and we try to implement plans on how to support those students and individuals. We also have child study meetings, so if a student is at risk, particularly academically, we'll meet with an academic group, and we will look at intervention plans to put in place to try to help those students be successful. I can't not mention Morgan, the dog with Officer Connor. The kids absolutely love Morgan in the morning. They pet Morgan before they come into school. It really has been a calming effect, you know, on a lot of our students that really need that, and they look forward to seeing Morgan. So, she's so cute. It's been a great addition to our district. We did a safety care overview as a staff. I know that they're going to do it at the other buildings as well. Again, everybody can benefit from de-escalation strategies on how to take a situation that's really heightened, maybe a child in crisis, to bring it down one step at a time towards calm. And that's what this program teaches our staff. We're actually all been trained as trainers as well. We had our typical safety drills at the start of the year, bus evacuation, fire drills. Our staff have had Alice trainings, so again, looking at the whole safety component. We're looking to hold our first attendance meeting officially with our leadership team and Officer Connor to look at why kids are absent from school. We monitor the attendance every day. It comes out to our staff. But this meeting is purposeful in looking at our highest attendance, students who have been absent the most, and looking at reasons why they've been absent. Some of it obviously is medical, but like the superintendent said, if it's due to anxiety, we have to really put some mental health strategies in place to try to support those students to get them at school. One of the big things that we are implementing this year, and I know Mr. Burkett is very proud of this, he's invested a lot of time in the cultures of dignity, many guys, and it really focuses on the term dignity. Dr. Williams and I had the privilege of watching one of the lessons today. They're given by our guidance staff, and it was on dignity and what is it? And you have dignity just because you're a human being. And it was taught to a group of fourth graders, and there were activities around that, and it really is teaching them that we all have worth and value. We also have some social work interns that we have, and we're putting them to good use working with our students. And October is anti-bullying month, so we're looking to try to have a presenter and to do a little bit more on bullying, what it is, what it isn't. There's still a lot of confusion around what it really is and how we define it. So, we're trying to look at some clarity. And for our students, how to stand up to a bully, what kinds of things can you do to prevent it from happening? And again, that's all about the school culture. And then we have Ms. Luke, and I want to give a shout out to her. She works with our L students, our students that come into our school not even speaking a word of English at times, and she supports them. I was observing a class the other day, and there were four L students that were fully included in a classroom doing the activities the other students were doing, and she was in the room supporting them along with a teacher, and that was really cool to see. So, we look forward to implementing all these things and more as we go forward in the year. We're so proud of what we're all doing as a staff, as a school, as a community, to support our students in the room of SEL. And Mrs. Nichols will talk about our Littlest Vikings.
Yeah, our Littlest Vikings are so lucky to be supported by our wonderful guidance, our Adjustment Counselor staff. We have Jason Rasher, who works with preschool and part of kindergarten, Laura Eddy working with first grade and kindergarten, Nicole Heavy working with second grade and kindergarten. Then we have the brilliant Mr. Tom Mahoney as our school psychologist, and he has a student intern that's working with him this year, who did some hours with him two years ago and is back with us full-time this year, Sarah Bennett. So, our students are really reaping all the benefits that those folks are bringing. And we also have a new behavior specialist, Amy Crawford, who's doing a wonderful job as well. So, a lot of the things that you've heard the other schools doing, we're also doing the student support teams. We meet every Friday, and we discuss the students that are in highest needs. We have our CST up and running, supporting students and teachers in academic and social emotional arenas. Attendance meetings, safety care overview for my staff will be on the twentieth during PLCs, so I'll be going to each of their grade levels to do the overview with them. We too have been talking with our students about done with bullying. We have Chris Raphold, who's been long associated with Central School. He comes in and he does a kickoff for every grade level, and he talks about what it is to be a buddy and how to not be a bully and the difference between the two. And then he comes back and goes to different classrooms whenever I need him to. He can come in and work individually with students. He's worked with families. He's just been a tremendous asset as we teach our students how to be, how to become good friends. Our Family Tradition Survey has been sent out to all families. Mrs. Eddy and Mr. Ross, our phys ed teacher, they've been working collaboratively to teach our students about the Buddy Bench, which is on our playground. It's a spot where kiddos can go and sit if they're, they want someone to play with and they don't really have anyone. So, the students are explicitly taught how to use the Buddy Bench and what to do when you see someone on the Buddy Bench. So, it's been great to have the two of them collaborate on that, the phys ed teacher and our Adjustment Counselors, so that students really see that we're all connected. You know, it's not just Mr. Ross teaching Jim. He's teaching us about how to be a good friend too. So, it's great for the students to make connections in that way. For our October PTO meeting, Mrs. Byrne invited Mrs. Fleming to come in and do an Alice overview for families. Mrs. Fleming was the author of the social story that we use to teach students about Alice, how Alice helped the three little pigs defeat the big bad wolf. So, we start our, our education for students on Alice using very developmentally appropriate terms, and it's all based off the story of the three little pigs. So, that was great for the parents to be able to come and learn a little bit more about how their students are learning about Alice protocols. Classrooms are doing social justice slides every day with morning meetings. This week I had the opportunity to meet, well, this weekend, last week, individually with all of our instructional support assistants, just to have, just to see how they felt about how the year was beginning, what goals they have for themselves and the students that they work with, and how Mrs. Byrne and I can best support them to reach those goals with their students. Because truthfully, we could not run the program that we run without the support of our instructional support assistants and their expertise and their safety care training and all the wonderful things that they do with our students. So, it was a great opportunity to be able to sit down and talk with them. Next week, we will start classroom conversations with all of our teachers, again, seeing how the year started, looking at some data, talking about the culture and climate that they're building in their classrooms and the relationships that they're building with their students. And then Mr. Diaz Martin, shout out to him, the District BCBA. He is available to us pretty much whenever we need him, but he is housed at Central School on Thursdays. So, that's been an awesome opportunity for him to really be boots on the ground with our students. He's worked with our sub-separate programs to build classroom management strategies, and they're using Class Dojo, and he's just put so many, streamlined so many of our management techniques that now it's pretty, it's streamlined much more than it was before. Instead of pockets of people doing different things, a lot of the things are being done in all our sub-separate programs to support students and kind of motivate them to show us their expected behaviors. So, that's, that's where we are. We're off and running, and we're happy, and the little ones have stopped crying. And Officer Connor and I did bus safety, and the classrooms that I did, I can't, I cannot lie, they were not happy that it was me because they really wanted Officer Connor and Morgan. So, I don't know, I figured a little stuffy of him or something to bring. That way, they'll be happy when I show up. But we're off to a great year, and thank you for all your support, and Superintendent Legault, and Assistant Superintendent Williams as well.
Thank you. That's exciting.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I might have a couple. So, resources, I don't know how the resources are paired out where we have different needs at different schools, obviously, and then we have different, you know, populations, grade levels and so forth. How do we go about making sure that we have the proper resources at a school that might have, you know, just under a thousand students versus a school that has just north of five hundred? So, I don't know if anybody can speak to that.
How do they allocate?
Just how the, how the resources are allocated.
You mean specifically the resources that are used in the programs that were discussed?
How we decide how many Adjustment Counselors at each building?
Sure.
We continue to have team meetings, look at data, look at student enrollment. We also look at how many, how many incidences in a year. It's hard, though, to put a number on social emotional well-being and health. So, what we tried to do is during SRA, we filled up with Adjustment Counselors. We put more supports in places. We're trying to hold on to them and trying to put them into the, our operational budget going forward and not using a grant because these positions are needed. And the principals will start to come with what they believe that is needed for their building and the supports and how we allocate those supports in those areas. I mean, you could have, Central School's going to see the child first. going to see the child first. To, to special education, we knew a stu, we had some students that we knew in kindergarten. We were not ill-prepared for them by the time they got to high school. We knew they were coming, and we were ill-prepared. We don't do that anymore. We now have team meetings on a regular basis, principals, super, everybody, central office. We know what's going on at Central. We then know what's happening at Middle. And then, you know, Jay is inside saying, we have this student that's on, on their way. What supports do we need in place at Mitchell School? It's not, okay, well, tomorrow, let's put him in at Mitchell School. It's, we're starting to see students that are in pre-K. We know that we're going to need a room for this student in four years from now at Mitchell School. And, but it's a constant conversation, and it's a constant drive of who we are, where we are, and what we need to do. We certainly want to keep students in district because they need, they need their peers and their families who they've grown up with. We certainly don't want to send students out of district. So that's, that's what we're trying to do, the best that we can, and holding students here to support them. And we have students, we have a stu, I have a student that a superintendent called me the other day and asked us to take this student here in our district under school choice because they are bullied in their district. And maybe a new start could help them, and we can support them. But I have to make sure, do we have the supports in place for that student here? So usually talk to the principals and find out. That's one, I would say by talking, looking at our data, our enrollment, and we want to keep kids in-house. The best place for a student is in their own, is in their own community.
And then the only other one I would be interested in knowing is, early on, I remember us talking a little bit about restorative justice and the practice of that, and I'm just wondering how that is squaring up with student engagement. Are we seeing, you know, any correlation between how those two things come together?
Deb, you had the perfect example today, when you talked to, when you told me about the example of the, of the student with Mr. Diaz.
If I could remember this morning.
Talking about when they had the money.
Oh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Diaz Martin has put together a ClassDojo program for our students in the sub-separate programs, and the students earn different points on an app, and then they get to turn in those points to buy things from their classroom store. If they have some type of like egregious behavior, then they can't, their, their account is frozen. They don't lose what they've earned, but their account is frozen, so they have to spend their money the next day. This has been highly motivating for those students. At the end of the day, if they've had all their expected behaviors and they earned X amount of points, there's like a green doughnut that adds on the app. So they're all working for their green doughnut, you know, and they walk out of the building, hey, did you get your green doughnut? I got my green doughnut, Mrs. Nichols. And it's, it's just such a celebration for those students and very motivating for the students in that program. And so grateful that he was able to bring that to us because that wasn't something that we were implementing, because we really just didn't know about it. So it's, it's wonderful to have that. And as students integrate into the TLC program as they need it, they'll be able to start with that system right away. It's not something that'll really have to be created. It'll be something that they naturally become a part of. And, you know, the social groups that our Adjustment Counselors do are so invaluable, just like Mrs. Anderson was talking about. We really take those kids that are, even preschool, four years old, and you can see that, oh, there's like a little bit of a social struggle, or they want to make a friend, but instead of saying, hey, will you play with me? They throw something at them. So we can help them learn, give them the script, you know, oh, would you play with me? Would you like to be my friend? And really help them from the foundational level up, so that hopefully there's less of those kiddos.
Yes.
Because they're throwing bigger things when they get to you.
Yes.
So, you know, we really like to.
They're having the Dojos at Mitchell and then here at the junior senior.
Yeah. It's a wonderful, wonderful program, so. But yeah, everything that the district has done to support our students in their social, emotional health and well-being, I know people don't maybe think that four-year-olds and five-year-olds can struggle with that at our age, but they really do. And they really need that early intervention piece because we can really give them, you know, some really good tools as they begin their 12, 13-year journey in the East Bridgewater Public Schools. It's, it's just been so important. And children have changed so much, and they have so much more to, to deal with in their little new lives. So it's been really important for us to be able to offer that. And the Adjustment Counselors, Mr. Mahoney, Ms. Bennett, they do not stop all day long. They're, they're running, and they're troubleshooting and having groups, and they're just so valuable to us.
And we feel like we have a good process in place for parents or families with regards to whether or not how things work their way through the system?
Yeah. I, I believe that we've made, that we've had weaknesses in areas, and we have, we will continue to sew it up so that it gets tighter as we move up the line. We probably overlooked, as Mrs. Nichols just said, we knew that there was problems, but we probably overlooked that, that and started later, where we probably shouldn't have been looking at it earlier to curb, to hold kids accountable for their behaviors, absolutely tell them that they're unacceptable, they're not going to be tolerated. But yet, as we move forward, we can change this behavior by holding kids accountable, but also showing them that there's another way to do things and another way to handle themselves in different situations.
Thank you.
It takes a little time to catch up. Do I think that we've made some mistakes at the, at the junior, senior high school? Of course we have. We have different things going on all the time. Mr. Walsh came down today with an incident that happened in real time in our cafeteria that many, somebody might have saw on Instagram today. I can't, we can't stop that. There's, I can't stop a photo. You take a photo, it's out of here. There's nothing I can do about it right when it goes. I heard from a parent, Mr. Walsh heard from a parent, Mr. Silva, I think, heard from a few. But what we can do is we can find out, why, why do we think that that's okay? Why should we be taking a picture and then sending it out to the world and saying, this is what this is, when it really wasn't that? And we, now we did this big hypothetical situation and, and, and sending this out and having people upset. So hopefully we incur this behavior and get it into the system as we move forward. We're always going to run into these. It's, you know, I call schools, there's not a person when I say this, and then they're going to know it. It's event-driven, you know? We're going to see these things, but what am I going to do with that? What, what are they going to do with that student? Other than hold them accountable for their actions, talk to their parents about their actions, make sure that they sit down and have a conversation with the person that, that it happened with? Kristi, you're doing that? Sitting down, we're remed, we're having these conversations with the other person? It's hard for two 15-year-olds to sit in the same room and, I just did this to you. I'm sorry that you feel this way. It's hard. But we're trying to do better at it, and I think that we're sending PD, we're going to PDs all the time. Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Walsh went to a couple PDs. We set up for them on different ways on how to communicate with an aggressor. I think it was how to communicate with the aggressor and how to communicate with the victim. And an aggressor could be just, I'm throwing a piece of paper at you for 25 minutes in a classroom. At some point, I'm going to stand up, and now I become the aggressor or the attacker. So you just, you said bullying at, pre-K through two, and bullying at grades three through six. So hopefully, we're doing the right things. We're setting, we're setting these in place, and we, we do believe in restorative justice. We can't throw, we can't throw the student away, and we don't want to throw the student away. We want to help the student understand, these are your actions, they happened, now let's come back around.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
So the only other question I wanted to ask, sort of an unfair question, so I apologize, is that is...
And you give it to them.
Not to, not to Superintendent Legault. We ask her unfair questions all the time. I'm just curious. All of this sounds incredible, and I don't have the awareness to think, wow, way back when, when I was in elementary school, was this stuff going? Probably was at some level, but I don't think to this extent. And so, do you think from your observations, you know, these things make a difference, or you're seeing evidence that it's really impacting the kids in a positive way, I'd like to think?
I'd have to say that we see it every day on a daily level, and it's with individual students. So when we put an intervention in place, and we see whether Ed has made a difference, and that child has stopped that behavior, or if they continue, we know that we have to do something different and approach it differently. So we have some anecdotal data to suggest that certain things are working, but it's very individualized. Every student needs something different. And so we try to find what works for each student, depending on the circumstance. So even with the restorative justice piece, I know that we have a lot to learn about that still, and we're working hard to try to implement that, because really it's not about punishing students, because we know that typical suspensions, detentions, even though necessary at times, to hold them accountable, don't necessarily alter behavior. There's not a lot of data to suggest that. So we're looking at different ways to repair what the child has done wrong. So if they stole something from the school store, they have to rectify and giving that back, or to pay the money for it and apologize for it. So it directly correlates to the student's behavior. So we do have data to suggest that our interventions are working. It's not just one thing alone. It's a lot of things coupled together that we're doing to intervene for children.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that data look at both students involved in incidents, or just the student who was maybe the one who had the violation?
More at the one who does, has the violation, but we also look at the impact on the student who's considered the victim as well, and to see if they have any or need any support services in certain circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, does anybody have any questions about anything from the superintendent's Next up, we have, I'm going to, do you want to give these to Ellen and see which ones we need to pass on? Next up, we have to discuss the creation of a school committee DEI Subcommittee. This is something that Superintendent Legault and I discussed in our meeting last week.
So we have a, I'm asking to maybe create, or to create a DEI Subcommittee for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We work, I think the, the district works tirelessly. We have staff that is working at this, that all students are welcome. And if we go out and do an equity audit on our strengths, our weaknesses, what's happening, and what does our district look like, I think having a Subcommittee could help streamline some of the conversation. So coming back to the team, the collective school committee team, that if we had a Subcommittee of members, you know, just like the SUPERVAL or the Policy Committee, you know, to meet, you know, maybe two or three times a year, just to say, so that when we start interviewing companies that come in to audit the district, and if we go in that direction to audit for equity and inclusivity, that the Subcommittee can help with that, instead of, and come back with their recommendation of why or why not. I just think it would streamline our process. It also, I do believe that this is up in front with this school committee. I do believe you want a diverse and inclusive supportive culture here in the district and climate, and I just thought that it would be useful to maybe just get two or three people to do a Subcommittee. Dr. Williams and I meet with the EBCC. Julia Sheehan in the district is our liaison. There are a few other people that have joined on, at the, at the other buildings. There's a lot of community effort into make sure that we all are welcome in East Bridgewater, but I thought that, I just wanted to bring it forward to see if we could, that it, if it would be thought that maybe you would entertain.
Thank you. So we don't have to, this is mostly just to discuss it. We can take it back, sit with it, think about it, and we can make it formal at the next meeting if we want. Does anybody have any questions or points of discussion while we are here now?
I want to say, I think it's a great idea. I'm on a heavy-hitting, I'm on heavy-hitting Subcommittee, I cannot take on another Subcommittee. The Policy Subcommittee is going to keep me very busy for the rest of the year.
We can figure that out later, but I think the first thing to decide is whether or not a committee is, a Subcommittee is a good idea.
Who would the, if such a Subcommittee exists, who would they interact with?
I, I think right now is, is that for, I think, a year and a half or two years, we've been talking about doing an equity audit. We have Dr. Khaleesi Warnum working with our, our staff now in professional development in that area. We've asked Dr. Warnum if she does an audit. She does not do that. So that was on the radar. Now, whether we continue and say, yes, we want to do an equity audit, or the Subcommittee, you know, maybe comes to a meeting, or maybe comes to see Dr. Warnum, or maybe goes out, you know, and we, as a Subcommittee, maybe talk at the district level and go out and see some subgroups, or goes to a couple meetings of the EBCC. What I'm trying to do is, is, I guess, maybe have a couple of meetings. I'm not talking about every week, or, but just if we interview a couple of the companies that I have called, and now sort of getting them ready. I have another one on Thursday that I'll be talking with. Maybe even a Zoom call, have a committee sort of interview and have a discussion with, say, do we want them to come in and do it? We're talking about between, and I know that money, money is an object, but money may not be an object when it comes to DEI and what we need to do. But we're looking right now between $25,000 and $100,000 to do an equity audit, and these are what the companies are, are coming forward. I don't know, we might get somebody for $10,000, we might get somebody for $15,000. I don't know. I'm just calling a list that was given to me by the Department of Ed, and I've called other districts that have done it. And we started with Dr. Warnum, but she doesn't do this. I was hoping that, you know, she would give us a little, you know, do that as well. But she also works with our staff and does all of our PDs. So I think that would be a tall gap. And I don't think it would be a, I don't think it would take up a lot of time, maybe a couple of meetings. But I think it also shows our support as a committee and as a team for make sure that we have diversity, equity, inclusion.
Anyone have anything else?
I agree with Ellen. I think it's a good idea, and I do have time to join, so I can volunteer that.
Okay. So we'll make sure it's on the agenda for our next meeting, and we'll make it an action item. Next.
You already did that one.
Yep, you're right, we did. So the next item on the agenda is the correspondent from the town clerk's office. That's just the official correspondence regarding the vote at the special town meeting regarding the Central School of Inclusion study. Next up, we have correspondence from Teamsters Local Union 653.
So the Teamsters came and met. The custodial unit has joined with the Teamsters Local Union 653. They had a meeting in late August. They joined the Teamsters, the local union. I then was told that they've joined the Teamsters. I reached out to them, and I said, that's great, and we'll support what you'd like to do. However, I'm the liaison to the school committee. The school committee is who you bargain with. So I spoke to your attorney, our attorney, Nick Domenello. Nick and I met with the Teamsters last week, or week, yeah, last, a week ago, asked them to write us a formal letter to you, saying that they will be bargaining for the custodial. I do not have any issues with this. They're, they also, the Teamsters, I believe, have members of the town, on the town sides. They represent some of the units on the town side, and I think that that's why they've come in. So I don't have any issues with this. We just wanted to make sure that they were doing all the things that they needed to do with the, with the state to represent our custodians, but I also wanted them to bring it to you so that you were notified, and that you would, I told them that I did not feel that you would not accept them to bargain, or to come to the bargaining table with. or to come to the bargaining table with the custodian.
Anybody have any questions?
What are the options here? This feels like it, obviously, I want to support the custodians in everything that they do. They're, they make an incredible difference here. A little nervous with the Teamsters being associated with that and what that does from a bargaining standpoint. So I don't know what action we're looking to take or what discussion needs to be had, but I think there needs to be a lot of discussion about this.
So I'll let you know this. Your, our custodians have all voted to be with the Teamsters. Which, they can do that.
Absolutely. And I support that.
Right. So my job is to bring it to you. I mean, you can have that conversation. We're going to negotiate with our custodians. And not, the Teamsters, they can be part of the Teamsters, but I'm still going to negotiate, and we're going to negotiate with our custodians. And that's how I look at it. Nick Domenello was there. We both said, you know, you got to go through the school committee. This is, they already are in the town, and I think that that's their.
I think there, I think there is at least one other department in town that is Teamsters affiliated.
We don't foresee there being any big budgetary concerns with regards to this?
I think it'll just be like any other negotiation.
Sounds like it's just like any other negotiation, so.
Maybe a little, a little more difficult with the Teamsters more detail.
So when the letter says that it's terminating, does that mean they are early terminating an existing agreement to then re-enter into a new agreement? I don't work in a union world, so I apologize for my naivety here. But they, they're terminating the collective bargaining agreement and looking forward to another one? So does that?
They can't. What they're saying, I think that's how it's written. They can't come in here and say, we don't have an agreement with you.
Okay, because that's right, that is how it reads.
That's kind of what I was concerned about. That's how I read it.
So is this basically, we like to reopen negotiations before, like, before our current contract expires?
No, they know that it's not up until the end of this year and that they'll be, will be starting in the spring. When we spoke to them, you know, Nick laid the ground rules, and they laid their ground rules. And I think that, for whatever reason, you know, the custodians wanted some representation from the Teamsters. But no, they can't come in and say, this is null and void. They cannot do that. We have an agreement with the EB, the East Bridgewater Custodial Association, who now is going to be part of the Teamsters, but they cannot null and void what you have already have in place.
Were the custodians previously, they were associated as a unit, but not affiliated with a large?
They were on their own.
Their current contract's through the end of June or the end of December?
June.
Anything else?
But I'm sure, I'm sure Lauren, if you wanted to, you could certainly call Nick Domenello and have that conversation just legal.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Well, thank you for coming.
My biggest fan.
And now we will move on to our action items. The first action item, I will take a motion to approve a proposal from Dr. Oh, biology and chemistry teacher, to organize a field trip to Belize for the STEM club for February 2025. This was discussed at our last meeting. Peter, Peter made the motion.
Second?
Moved by Peter, that's the words I'm looking for. Second by Scott. All in favor? Oh, discussion, sorry.
I'm certainly would vote in favor of this. But what I would like to see is that sometime between now and when that trip happens, that we have a representative from EF, educational boards, come here to talk to us. Like, I particularly was focused on the first paragraph in the document here that says, they maintain a close working relationship with U.S. and international authorities. In today's day and age, as we well know, things change where you would never assume they would kind of change dramatically, either politically or militarily. And that somebody is watching that and is in connection with the U.S. State Department to say, oh, wait a minute, don't go to Belize yet, there's something going on. I have no idea, but I just want to feel comfortable when somebody tells me that. Oh, no, that's part of what we do, we're on it. And we would never let somebody go without checking that box, kind of thing.
We did, we approved a trip like this last year. Did we get this company to come in to talk to us? Or did they just?
They did do a big presentation, but, and we asked a similar, we asked a similar question. I believe it was the same company?
I think it was.
And they answered in the affirmative.
Yeah, I only ask because I don't want to put it on the teacher, Dr. Roslovsky, bring in. They give her like an undoable task to get this company to come. If they've come in the past, they'll give us documentation, that's great.
I would say maybe the only other thing to at least discuss tonight over Belize is what's there. Going forward, maybe we have two options, whether one be international, one be domestic. So that way, we can alleviate some of that concern, which I agree is a little bit of a concern in today's day.
So a few years ago, we had this discussion and it's put in now, that you can, you can say, this is a go tonight. You can say yes. You have all the way up till the day before they leave, an hour before they leave. If it is not safe and you don't want them going, you pull back. This company that we're dealing with was the company that we dealt with prior to COVID. When everything shut down, we had some, some issues. And then got, I think, about 90% of our money back from them. But they've changed their rules a lot over these last few years, whether it's from COVID-related or now that we are going into the world that we live in. You know, we had a group over in Paris, you know. We had a fire over there, you know. There are terrorists around the, around the world. And so you have the right to pull back at any time.
And isn't the recommendation that the kids or the families take out trip insurance also?
Yep, our attorneys, and I think, I think it says it through all of their literature. And we would tell them as well. And I think that the school district would say, yeah, we would take out extra, you know, each family should take out extra trip insurance. I think most people are doing that even on their own flights these days. But, you know, it's extra 25 bucks, and you get your money back if something goes wrong.
I spent $7 on insurance to go to the corn maze the other day. So I think they also would come and do a parent night, right? And present to the parents? So, you can, if you want, I'm assuming the answer is yes, so you don't have to.
Yes, they will come to a parent's.
Okay.
Ironically, they called me about three hours ago trying to have us buy more trips, so.
I just think it's ultimately, as long as we provide opportunities for the parents to be fully informed on their options and their decisions, then it's a parent decision whether or not this is a right for their family.
I've had a student attend one of these, and it was an incredible experience.
Yeah. Yeah, I know the, last year, the eighth graders went to DC, which is a totally different ballgame. I get it, but also maybe more age appropriate to be that close. But fantastic, very rewarding.
Well, I think as a committee, we're approving the opportunity.
Yes, exactly.
But it is individually decided. We are not doing, it's, it's an opportunity, we're saying, go. It's not a decision. Does that make, am I understanding it right?
Bill, is this a contract the parent sign with the company?
Yes.
So we don't, we don't sign anything?
I mean, the trip insurance, actually, if you sign up early, you get a $200 bonus, and the trip insurance is $190. So actually, if you sign up early, the trip insurance is free. It's going to wash, which is nice. I think they probably geared it that way to unbuild that price.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I would take a motion on moving the October 24th school committee meeting to 6:30 instead of 6:00.
So moved?
Moved by Scott, second by Peter. I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody have any questions, complaints?
I'm going to be traveling that night. I guess I could do it on Zoom, but I'm not going to physically.
We do really well with that.
I know.
Those are my favorite meetings.
But it wouldn't matter between 6:00 and 6:30 anyway, right? It would still be the same thing. Okay.
So I don't think I'll vote, I'll abstain. Fine by me.
Any, I can't take notes and call for a vote at the same time.
Oh, so moved. I moved that we, that we.
I moved, we have a second and a motion. So now we can just vote, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
I would take a motion to, so the school committee goals. I will take a motion to approve the school committee goals, and then we can pass around the sheet to sign them. Do you want to discuss first?
Take a movement, second it, and then discussion, and then vote.
Do we, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Becky.
Second.
Second by Ellen. Discussion. We have our handout, we've gone over these, we've reviewed these. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? We're ready to sign these? Okay. All in favor? Aye. And we'll make sure these get signed before you want to pass these around?
Yeah, do we want to pass them on our own?
And the next is the strategic plan and business meeting calendar.
Operating protocols?
Protocols are, oh, I skipped the protocols. Take a motion, that's because I put my note in the wrong action item. Take a motion to approve the school committee operating protocols as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Becky.
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion?
The one thing I asked for was to change turn off to silence, and it's done, so I'm good.
Anything else?
No.
Nobody else has anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
And I will pass this around to be signed by all of us as well. Now, I would take a motion to approve the strategic plan and business meeting calendar as amended. And now I can put that out. Because here we added in.
Say, so moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Becky.
Discussion.
Do you have discussion?
Yes.
Later.
And Gordon, I think, he looks like he's chomping at the bit over there, too. I would like to add, under, in May of '24, town, the town election, we have to put, the reorg meeting is the May 21st meeting. So reorg should be there. And then on May 7th, that could be the.
So hold on, slow down. So May is currently not even on here anywhere, right?
Oh, yes, it is.
The second page.
There's a second page.
Sorry, I started with the second page.
I got you now. I was like, there's got to be something missing. Okay, May 2024, we need to add.
That's the school committee reorg.
Reorg, second meeting in May. That makes sense, right?
And then the first meeting in May is the mid-cycle, superintendent's evaluation makes mid-cycle, where she's presented with the mid-cycle. And then April 9th is, if she has any evidence or anything to give us before the mid-cycle, but we may not need that. We may, you could just do, because it's going to be as simple. You don't have to do, it's like not a big thing you need to do. And then I only have one more thing, is MASC resolutions need to go in the October of '23. No, well, it would be next year, October. It should be MASC resolutions, because they have to get voted on before November.
And I.
So let's, let's remember to add that to next year's calendar?
Do we have to add a vote for this year?
Add it for this year, because then next year, they'll take this calendar and then just bring it forward for the next year.
So I'm going to put it in the first October meeting?
Yes, because it's here tonight anyway.
To bring it back. Right, but I'm going to put it in the first October meeting for next year so that there's time to bring it back to the second meeting if there's any problems.
Yes. Because that's what happened to us last year. I brought it to the first meeting, and then nobody wanted to vote on it because they hadn't seen it. And then we had to vote on this the next meeting. Because we only have a certain amount of meetings to vote on it before it has to be brought to the MASC conference.
Which is in November.
Yes.
We only have one more meeting before the November, that November meeting that we have to vote at.
Anything else, any other additions since we're taking this back and editing it?
I can read them off to you, but don't worry about it, I can send my notes either to you or to Mike or to both. I love the concept of the annualized agenda. It's going to make things heck of a lot easier. But there's so many things not on here, like, for instance, reviewing the school committee goals and operating protocols. Do that, you know, in the September 1st meeting or whatever.
We added that.
Oh, good, okay. And then I put down at least three times a year to review the school committee goals progress, to revisit them, to say, okay, how are we doing with these things? Rather than just once a year, we have them on a document.
Look, if we stick them in here now, we can vote on it now.
Well, no, I want it, no, I want it finalized.
And I too had the reorg meeting after the election, the MASC resolutions. If at some point in time, pro, forward thinking, to think about, oh, we're going to have a workshop in the fall and a workshop in the spring to put a benchmark or at least a placeholder there for it. You know, voting on updated the policies, although I don't know you can count on the schedule for that. They come when they come, right? The super, as Ellen had said, the superintendent, mid-cycle review documentation, so you got that. And things like school committee assignments to graduation, National Honor Society, awards night. Again, if we have a place for them, then we're not surprised.
Those happen like invitations, though.
Yeah.
I think they're pretty standard, right? Get invited.
We don't know when they're scheduled, though, so we wouldn't know which meeting.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, yeah, okay. I was going to say, at least you probably know the month thereabouts, so. Okay. And the reviewing the subcommittees, either their effectiveness or their, how relative they are. Maybe we add a new one like we're talking about now. Maybe we look at those lists of subcommittees once a year and say, we don't even do anything with this subcommittee. Or, hey, we need a subcommittee for X, Y, and Z. I mean, it just, I just think it makes sense to even just look at it, even if it's a rubber stamp. At least you've had time to just look at it and say, yeah, these are good, or I don't know what this one does, or we've never met, or whatever it may be, so. I mean, things like that. I can jot these down and send them over to you.
That would be helpful.
That, to me, when I think of an annualized agenda, it, you know, it should be as inclusive as we can make it. It's not going to have everything, obviously, things come up. But there are certain things we can know are going to come down, like, we might as well have them on there, so.
So we will.
Can I say something?
Yep, absolutely.
It looks like the first.
It looks like the first time we talk about finances is January 23rd.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah.
That if we're talking about it being forward, I agree, that the budget part isn't in there in the beginning half. And what flagged it for me is that we, we just approved, like, in our school committee goals, that at regular monthly meetings, we'll review a budget in collaboration with the business manager. So my point was the same, that the first half of the year doesn't have the budget part in it.
Oh, I see what you mean. I guess we just automatically put it there in the second, the business meeting of the month, but I think.
Well, last year, last year, we knew that there was a, it was pretty organized with strategic plan focus and then budget focus, strategic plan, budget focus. So we knew once a month, we were hearing a detailed report from John.
Right.
It's just missing from this calendar.
I'm gonna guess.
So this, so it says, looks like the, if I'm assuming the spacing is meaning what I think it means, it looks like we start the first business meeting. So it is on here, but the business meeting is January 23rd. I think what I'm hearing is maybe we wanna back that up earlier in the year.
I think we need, well, I think, well, no, I guess I think, we need to hear from John at least monthly, because we just approved and signed in our goals. We would be monthly hearing from John.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing? So I'm gonna guess, this is my best guess estimate, is that the January, February, March is probably right up until it's talking about the following year, the new FY year's budget. But typically, we do, it's just not on here. We need to put it on here. So I agree with that, is the business meeting, we usually do here, the second meeting of the month, we usually do hear from John. So it's just not on here. It needs to be on here.
That's for the current year.
Yes.
I'm gonna mark them as business meeting, and they'll include the same line that the other meetings with that designation have.
Was there anything more, John, that you would add about that, other than the statement that I took over? Sorry.
No. I mean, I will present what you guys want me to present. If there's anything in addition to what I usually present, I'm happy to hear about it. I have been looking at a way to forecast salary, salary expenses a little better, because, you know, that's where local school district gotten in trouble around us. And I don't think, with the information I provide you guys regarding salary, you have enough information to feel comfortable that we're gonna meet budget, other than me saying we're gonna meet budget. So I've been working on, on something to, to help forecast the future regarding salary, so.
I know Gordon always looks at the salary, salary warrant and tries to project out. So it's something similar to that, but on a bi-weekly basis for the future, so. I'm happy to put something together.
I think it'd be smart for you to do this, like, maybe every other month for us? Because I looked at it now, it's like, we do it January, February, March, and then not again until June. Would it make sense if it's like every, like, fourth meeting, we do it, like, every other month?
Well, it's budget season in May, so that's why.
No, I know what I mean. Is there, is there a way to get an update in, like, November? If this thing's updated, there might not be. I don't know if Becky wants to answer for you?
I got this. He's assistant now.
Yeah, no, it's good. It's good collaboration.
I think, I, I think that we have to hear from John monthly. We just agreed that we would hear from John monthly. So I don't think there's wiggle room for that right now.
That was what you guys wrote in your meeting, the goals, right?
That's what we just voted on.
This is the superintendent, the school committee goals.
We just voted that we, in the goals, that we would hear.
Like we're doing it, John, once a month.
Yeah, that's what we had been doing. Yeah, and it's. That's what we do do. It's not like I.
Is this more than what we currently do? This is nothing, okay, then.
No, we do two meetings a month. One meeting is instruction, the other meeting is business.
Except for November and December and September.
Right, because there's one meeting, so we put them together. But there's two meetings in September, there's two in October. I, I think it's, it needs to be said in here, and I think maybe it was just.
So we'll formalize it.
Yep.
And then I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, John, there is some responsibility on our part to figure out what we want to hear. If there's anything that we don't already hear about.
Right.
Who puts this together?
I think it's always.
So I think when they started to do it, I think they were trying. I always know that I want two meetings. And I think they were, I think they were looking at a, a way to try to encapsulate everything that Gordon was saying in one of the meetings and that everybody was saying. And I think when Mike started writing it up, he was trying to get everybody's point in there, and probably just forgot the business, knowing that we always do a business meeting, and it's like almost an afterthought. We'll get it back on there.
I just had the sense, looking at this, that someone wrote down things we've done in the past, and then tried to put a list together, and they left out a bunch of stuff, as Gordon said. And if we are gonna do this right, let's do it right. Let's list everything.
So in the calendar that we had before, so like, the resolutions wasn't on the calendar. There was things that weren't on the calendar.
Yeah, and there's things, like, I know, it's something I've struggled with the last two years, is there's some things that happen every year that you're kinda like, oh, yeah, I didn't know I had to go to that, or I didn't know I should be at that, or this, and we're gonna do this, because you don't know. So a calendar like this is great. I just think it needs to be more than just this.
Yeah, I think what they were, I think when it came up about the calendar, it was trying to put down what was being said.
Yeah.
And knowing that we all, I mean, when I first came, it was one meeting a month, and it was boom. And then we said, no, if we want instruction in students to take center stage, that takes its own meeting. And then the business meeting is the business meeting. It's a support meeting. It's, it's what we do to drive the strategic plan. So we put that in, you know, one and two. So we had two meetings a month. And I think what was happening is, I think this one is, all the things that were said that night, it's like, okay, I wanna put these in, and then come back around and. I personally, I didn't think it was ready to be voted on. I thought it was more of a conversation piece of thing.
This is very rough draft.
That's what I'm saying.
It's a great four into it, and I think you had some great ideas, things to add, that are like on a cyclical nature, that we were ready for. Like, I know in April, we're gonna do this. It's great to have that, so let's, let's do it.
Yeah, you're probably not gonna capture every single thing, but if we do a pretty good format to begin with, then we can just add things.
And it's gonna help future members, too.
Yeah.
I think it keeps in line with the things in our purview as well, which can sometimes be confusing, right? We're talking about budget, policy, the superintendent, right? And it keeps, as long, I think as long as this keeps a focus on the things that are in our purview, so it doesn't add confusion to what we can or cannot do for different things, I think that's just an important note, too.
And now, do we have to vote to send this back, or do we just table it and?
Table it.
Cool, tabled. And then we'll get, between Gordon and I, we will get these notes to Mike, and we'll bring back another draft at the next meeting.
Also, it might be, um, let me see. So in, in March, there's, we usually have our hearing, like, the budget hearing, but it's not here, because we don't even know.
Yeah, TBA. Budget hearing, TBA.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that. It's usually March.
Yeah, it's between February and March on the count, on here.
I would say if you're aware, especially you, Ellen, who's been doing this for a while, if you would know, like, certain times of day we do things, I would definitely email Mike. That way, it's a very inclusive list.
Yep.
Right, because we could make a watch for. I don't think we need to get into the.
Sometimes I just think to myself, oh, yeah, we gotta do that.
No, that's fine.
I can ask Mike to just, let me see it before.
Well, Gordon's gonna have some things.
Oh, yeah, Gordon, yeah.
Yeah, I'll send it to Lauren.
Yeah. Send them to Mike and copy me.
Okay.
I see it. I'm trying to.
It's a big list.
I take a motion to vote on the superintendent's evaluation goals.
Do we want to go through it? Does anybody, we probably want to go through a preview?
Well, that would be discussion. I need a motion. Moved by Alan.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Discussion.
Would anybody like to go through this? And ask questions?
I am, I guess it's more of a statement. I'm not voting, I just haven't looked at it. I'm not gonna look at it here now, without spending time on it, to vote tonight, so you can.
I'm not surprised that you feel that way, because I would feel the same way. So my suggestion is, now that you have a hard copy in front of you, take a look at those. We'd like to finalize it by next meeting, so if you have any notes, to send them to us as a subcommittee or whatever, work on, so we can get these finally worked out, so it makes sense that we can take action on it. We're already, you know, two months into the year, actually, probably more than that, when you think of the fiscal.
I was optimistic.
Yeah. I feel an urgency to get it done. Like, I don't want, I don't want that to go unknown. I feel an urgency that this is not completed. But I also am not just gonna.
Willy-nilly, yeah.
So yes, absolutely, I'll message. And then if I have a thought, do, is there someone that's taking point? To email, so it's not.
You can email me.
Okay.
So anybody can email, anybody on the committee can email Alan.
Well, I don't want to have any deliberation or anything, so I guess if you.
We'll just, we'll individually email you.
Okay. Sounds great.
We don't have to go back and forth. It's fine.
Thank you, though, for getting it done.
You're welcome. I hope that the next meeting, it will be finalized and ready to be voted on.
I take a motion to approve the homeschool education plans as reviewed and recommended by the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Gina Williams.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Gordon, seconded by Scott. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I take a motion to approve proposed changes to the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School student handbook.
So moved.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Becky.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Alan.
So the redline changes that are in here have to do with our bullying policy and our, that resides in our online policy manual. And my preference would be to update our policy manual. I see that the, I see that these changes came from Desi, but I feel like we're, we're changing something before we actually change the policy. Oh, go ahead.
So we had some incidents last year at the junior senior high school. Desi wrote us back and said, please look at your policy and your student handbook. We sent this to our attorneys at Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lahane. Alicia St. Floren has gone through the student handbook. Her recommendation is to strike on page 23. Strike viable from procedures, Desi, and that's Desi recommendation as well. But it says, the principal or their designee upon receipt of a viable report. Everyone, every report we get is viable. So we'd like to take that out.
So you're just striking the word viable. Report stays viable.
Yes.
Yep.
On page 24, the school district will also reconsider whether the alleged conduct may constitute a potential civil rights violation. That has to be in there by law if we violate a civil rights violation. We didn't have that in our policy or in our handbook. So that, so Alicia put that in, and it's probably through MASC. I, I'm just letting you know what they cited us on in our own student handbook, not on your policies.
So I just want to say, so when I went over to this, the student handbook with Mr. Clements, I don't know, feels like an eternity ago. I had him, he added in the bullying prevention policy. And so this policy needs to be referenced, so it says bullying prevention. That's our actual policy, and it needs to say whatever the file number is, which it doesn't. So this is our actual policy, and then at the end, you can see all the MGL sites and all that stuff. So that means we have to change our actual policy.
Right, so your, so your attorney has gone through the bullying policy and has redlined what we need to do. Then if you look on page 25, the school committee shall review the bullying policy every two years or biannually and make changes deemed necessary and or appropriate. Okay, that was recommended by Desi, but she's also saying to do that. She understands that we have a policy. Our, your policy overarches this. So regardless of what this says, we still have our policy. We, and we understand it. However, those are the redline changes at this time for this handbook. Then, this is what we need to do for the handbook of the junior senior high school. Then you can go on with what school committee needs to do of the policy. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. But this is our actual policy that's printed here, and then cites off, so we have to, so that means we should probably be changing, because this is our living, our policy is in the manual. So we probably need to change the redlines in our policy, too, I'm guessing.
In your school committee policy?
Yes.
Right. So if I can just say, timeout. I need to stay focused on this right now, because I gotta get one thing done. The student handbook needs to change with these redline edits, and can be changed without your policy being changed this evening. Then you can come back around for school policy. I would, I would recommend that I would send what you want me to change to Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lahane on student issues. Have her come back with those changes for the next meeting. That's what I'm just saying, that that, because this is in your, in the handbook, and this is what kids are seeing and parents are seeing, that's why we, we were asked to change this.
Yeah, I think we can, my understanding is, the handbook, because we approve it, is an extension of our policies.
Right.
So I agree, let's, let's approve this, so you can go print it or actually post it. And then we have the footnote, we'll go in and actually make sure our policies in our policy manual are in alignment.
Moving on to the next thing, because I don't have a problem doing that. I can do that. So that means at the next meeting, I'll be bringing this bullying policy for the first reading, or we can actually vote to waive the two reading process and just vote it in, in the one reading. So last year, at the end of the school year, I sent an email to Mr. Clements about, we had just updated some instructional materials, policies. That was IJ instructional materials, IJL library materials, selection and adoption, and IJR reconsidering of instructional resources. And, and then we adopted IJLA, which is library resources. So what I asked Mr. Clements, which I understand it was his, was like at the end of his being here, so I understand why it didn't get done, that the student handbook needs to reference these policies, IJL, IJLA, and IJR, in the library section. And that the student handbook shall also reflect the new updates of these policies where applicable by the library section. And and then I emailed Lauren, and then, you know, we get busy and stuff, and then it was the summer. So these need to go into the handbook, too. So I don't know how quickly, if you want to do the handbook twice, or if you want this stuff, if.
Let's, so we could, we can make these changes, and then we can do the bullying policy at our next meeting. And then you could, I'm assuming we could talk to Mr. Silva about these policies that are not currently existed, and then we could re-approve the addition of those policies when it's ready? Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
I think the bill needs to be part of the conversation
Yeah.
when talking about the handbook going forward, so he is involved in that conversation. The policy and the school committee that we follow is obviously yours. I'm just saying that what's, what's in here. We need to change this for Desi as, and tonight, I would ask for an action.
And the handbook gets posted, it doesn't, the hard copy doesn't go out to all the families. You say it's on the website, right?
People still have to sign it. So they do it on.
We, I think they were electronic.
Electronic. You're still, I'm sitting here going like this. Yep. I'll sign it, or check off, or you accept it.
I'm fine with that.
So just to review, we will vote on
The redline.
The redline changes tonight. And then we will take care of, we'll prioritize changing the school committee's bullying policy. And then the policy subcommittee can follow up with Mr. Silva about other policies that need to be put in here, and we'll come back for round two when that's ready.
Right?
Right?
Yep.
We've learned that this will be the final version.
On the letter that's in here, Mr. Jeff Sylvia's principal name is still there, so we probably wanted to.
We can wrap that in part of the discussion. So what we're doing, we're just doing the red line changes tonight.
Right, but the red line change will be the new, oh, it's ready.
Yes.
Can someone tell me if that word on page 25 is spelled correctly?
Which word?
Biannually.
Biannually, am I just?
Oh, biann, yeah, that's not spelled right.
So can we vote?
I don't think.
Acknowledging that that needs to be fixed or was that wording that was?
I just didn't know if it was a word that I just announced right away.
UA, I thought it was biannually. By, is it by?
I think it's supposed to be biannual.
I don't have any.
Biannually, A.
Oh, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
So is this written incorrectly?
Yes.
I was kind of looking at you for this one, Doctor.
Well, we highlighted what was in there, so now that we're seeing it, it's wrong and we'll change the spelling as well.
I just didn't want to put it on the website.
Right, so we will approve the spell, we will vote to approve or not the red line changes under the assumption that this misspelling will be corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I got it circled.
All right.
So we voted, we motioned, we seconded.
No, we motioned, we seconded, we discussed, yes.
And then we're going to table it till next.
No, no, we're going to, all in favor of the red line changes in the handbook?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay.
Next meeting, I'll make sure we have the updated bullying policy.
I would take a motion to vote on the MASC's 2023 resolutions.
I don't know if we're ready for the vote on it. I think my understanding is review it and we'll vote. What has to happen is if I'm going to be our representative at the conference by our next meeting, which is I think our last meeting before the conference, you guys have to tell me on resolution number one, we vote yea or nay.
Right.
You know, so since, I don't think, unless you guys have all gone through them.
So first, since I called for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Seconded by Becky. Discussion. Gordon doesn't have to repeat himself.
I try not to, but.
Do you want to go through these or do you want to read them and bring them back next time?
We do have another meeting before November.
Right.
I guess what we could do is there, are there any important points you would like us to know, like context that is not in these resolutions before we take them?
I still have to do some of my, I don't know if Superintendent Legault has more background, but there's a couple in here that, that reference that don't really pertain to us, like.
Metco.
Metco and with regional schools and all. The others are suggesting that parents keep their handguns locked up. I don't know if anyone's going to vote against that, but. And there's an interesting one on here that, you know, that they want to suggest that we, I think they either do away with MCAS or, or what do they say, pause it, I think. Therefore be a, MASC urges Massachusetts to develop a wider, more consensus-built strategy for an evaluation system with meaningful input from legislative, legitimate stakeholders. So they're kind of talking about, oh, we think maybe, this isn't, this isn't action, it's just a recommendation. So I mean, that's out there. And again, I need to get more of the background unless Superintendent Legault already knows more about that than I do, but, so.
Well, then, MASC is urging Massachusetts to enact a moratorium on MCAS detecting, testing effective immediately. That's what they're like looking for.
Yep.
Is there literature on that, on their website, on MASC's website at all?
I don't know.
Why they feel that way?
It's usually in the whereas statements.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Oh, right.
So, but I think from my vantage point, as long as we vote on it, you guys give me, we have some discussion next meeting and say, yeah, this one doesn't pertain to us, we don't care. This one, we feel strongly yea or nay. And so, and it's up to me to convey. I mean, for instance, we need one vote per resolution. I can't go and say three were, you know, three were for, three are against, you know.
You get one per committee.
Right.
So we need to review this before the next meeting and come back to you and say yea or nay on each of the eight.
Yeah, or if you want more info, you know, we'll get more info.
There, you know, there's a few in here that really pertain to what we've been doing over the last couple of years. One of them is in transportation. We knew that was coming up. Sometimes we only get one bid that allows companies, you know, hopefully Mr. Lucini doesn't do that and maybe we'll get more bids this time. But this was brought forward as something to, you know, hold them accountable and make sure that the state, kind of what the auditor gets involved and says, you can't go over, you know, you can't jack it up 50%.
Talked about that at Day on the Hill. I remember them talking about it at Day on the Hill.
Yeah, that, those are the ones I was just thinking about. There is DEI in here. You know, not every school district can afford to adopt positions. I don't think that that should be, you know, we force that or put that in as a resolution. And then there was the school, there is an MSBA in here. So just make sure you read on that, please, because that will affect us at some point.
Yeah, and just like I mentioned, it's the paragraph that starts, therefore be it resolved. That's what their, that's what their action item is. And the whereas paragraph is sort of the background. This is why that leads them to that conclusion, so.
And there's an addendum, too, on the first page. It's the resolution six. Also, I think there was a learning lunch this past Friday, which I'm pretty sure they record, but I don't, I wouldn't, I don't want to bet my life on it. So I think they could have recorded it and you guys could watch it in your spare time if you had any. But they talk about the resolutions.
I didn't get to see it, so I was tied up, but I will find out if it's recorded. I will certainly watch it or I'll reach out to Jason or whoever and get the background. And, and the way it works is there's always some sort of amendments, believe it or not, actively before we vote. And so theoretically, you have to give me, if I'm the voting member, you have to give me the authority to see what the amendment is and say, yea, I'm for it, or no, I'm against it, so. Give me a lot of power, stand up and usually have a whole speech and things, but.
Only kidding.
Okay, so we will come back next meeting and vote on these officially.
Okay.
I would take a motion to approve the sale of a surplus chop saw and 10 band risers.
Lauren, can you say something?
Yep.
If we could just say, make a motion to surplus.
To surplus. I would take a motion to surplus, one chop saw and 10 band risers.
Yes.
She'll move.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I would take a motion to accept a donation from Mrs. Patricia Riggs for $200 for students in need to be deposited into the donations account.
Move.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Discussion.
No, but that was very nice of her.
Generous, yes, it was very nice. All in favor?
Aye.
I would take a motion to accept the donation of a commercial refrigerator for the EBJSHS concession booth from Mr. Dave Barry, owner of the Town Tavern in Pembroke.
I think that's awesome that they did that. So moved.
Yeah, I moved too.
A second.
Moved by Ellen, seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to say, I finally got to go to that restaurant in Pembroke that everybody talks about all the time and it was very nice. That's a plug for the Town Tavern.
I'm sure Mr. Barry's happy he's made that donation already.
I would take a motion to approve payroll warrants 13PS.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ellen, seconded by.
Becky.
Becky. Payroll warrants means no Peter and no Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of September 19th, 2023.
She'll move.
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are tabling the last item.
Yes.
The accounts payable warrant, we're tabling?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the tail. I don't know, you can't recognize people's signatures.
It's just Peter and Scott because they can't.
Oh. Okay.
I'll take a motion to close the meeting. A journey. Moved by Becky.
Second.
Seconded by Scott.
We, I would just like to tell everybody, I hope they have their homecoming festivities. I hope they all have a great time and enjoy all of it. Anybody going to the bonfire?
So all in favor of adjournings meeting?
Aye. Thank you.